Aloha, kakou. I would like to call this tonight's meeting to order. Let the record reflect that today is Tuesday, November 7, and it is 6:02 PM. I'm going to ask our board secretary to call the role of the trustees.
Trustee Ahuna.
Eo.
Trustee Akaka.
Eo.
Trustee Kina is excused. Trustee Alapa.
Here, present.
Trustee Galutaria is excused. Trustee Souza.
Eo.
Trustee Trask is excused. Trustee Wahehe.
Present.
And Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Eo.
We have six trustees present.
Mahalo, thank you. Aloha, kakou, everyone, and welcome to our fourth and last Oahu Island community meeting. We are so happy to be here and share this time with all of you. Not every time we get to come down into the community and we're so grateful that we have the opportunity to hear you folks this evening, express your concerns, if you may have any, just your mana'o of anything that you want to express to us. That's what we're here for this evening. So I mahalo you for taking the time out from your busy schedule to spend time with us. At this time, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Carmen Hulu Lindsey, the Maui trustee, and I chair the board. With me tonight is my staff, who is the board secretary, Lehuwa Itokazu. And I have Amber Kalua, who comes from this very community. And Kanani Iyaya, both my aides, mahalo. At this time, I would like to ask each trustee to introduce themselves and their staff. So we'll start from Kyoni Souza.
Mahalo, Chair. Aloha mai kakou. I'm Kyoni Souza, the at-large trustee for Oahu. I wanted to introduce my staff, Kaua Rabello and Rochelle Kim. It's a pleasure to be in Wa Manalo this evening and looking forward to hearing your concerns and how we can work together. Mahalenui, aloha.
Trustee Wahehe.
Thank you. Aloha mai kakou. I am trustee John Wahehe IV, also trustee at large. I want to express my happiness. I'm always happy to be in Wa Manalo. There's a reason why everybody wants to live here. I really want to thank our lovely trustee from Oahu, Kalea Akaka, for organizing this meeting and for all the staff who helped put it together. My office manager is Melissa Winahan. And she's all the way over there. Again, I look forward to... And I also really want to thank the Wa Manalo community for coming out and everyone else who is listening virtually or came from elsewhere. And I really look forward to hearing your mana'o. Again, thank you very much.
Mahalo, trustee. Trustee Akaka.
Mahalenui, Chair. Aloha pumehana. Thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Kalea Akaka and I'm honored to serve as your Oha Oahu trustee. I'm also honored to chair Oha's committee on beneficiary advocacy and empowerment. Next to me is the other committee chair, our resource management chair, John Wahehe IV. And joining me this evening is Maiko Kuah, Nathan Taki Uchi over there. And joining us virtually this evening is another member of our team, Mark Watanabe. And an extended part of my team is my ohana, our traveling ohana unit here. I have in the back there my husband Tyler and our little baby, if you hear her singing back there. I wanted to say mahalenui to the chair, administration, all those that make these meetings possible. You know, I saw the great value in the meetings that we've had throughout our neighbor islands, where we're in the community and we're able to stay on the pulse, on the needs and concerns of our people and see what is working and what we could use more collaboration in and improve on. So I wanted to say mahalenui for joining us to provide that voice for our people this evening.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Ahuna.
Delina Maymeke, aloha. My name is Dana Huna and I'm the trustee for the islands of Ni'ao and Kauai. And with me tonight is my office manager over there, Claudine Kalpito. And who's not here but online tonight is my other office manager, Anuhea Diamond. I also too want to thank all of you for being here. It's great to see a lot of people taking the time. I just want to hear you guys' concerns. So thank you very much.
Aloha mai kakou. My name is Luana Alapa. And I am the Molakai and Lenai trustee. I am happy to be here in wonderful, beautiful Wa Manalo. I've got a lot of family and friends who live here. And it's great, first time ever for me. This is my third year in office and it has been an incredible experience. And I love my job. I really do. Because I love meeting our people and I love seeing and hearing from them so that we, as our board here, can do as much as possible to see to it that the concerns and issues are addressed and that we can also see some beautiful, if not positive, things happen for our people. Because we do that. It's been a long, long time. At this time, I'd like to introduce my two trustee aides in the back there of the house. Please stand up. Pohai Ryan, originally from Molakai. She's a grand bush and she's currently live... You guys live out here, right? In Wa Manalo? Or is it Kailua? You guys live Kailua or Wa Manalo? Oh, Kailua. Okay, well, next door. And then next to her is Summer Sores. Please stand up. And she's my trustee aide and this happens to be Brickwood Galutaria's, our trustee. You cannot be here, but that's Brickwood's daughter. And she works for me. So mahalo, everyone, and I hope to... I'm excited to meet all of you this evening.
Thank you, trustee. We also have our new kapohana, our CEO, with us this evening. And I'd like to introduce you to her. Her name is Stacy Ferreira. And I'm going to ask Stacy.
Mahalo, mahalo. It's a great privilege and honor to sit with you tonight, to get to know you a little bit better and understand your concerns and celebrations in your community. I want you to know that we're here to serve you. That is our commitment. And I just want to say mahalo for your warm ho'oukipa and aloha tonight. And I look forward to meeting as many of you as I can. I met a handful of you before we started. And I see a few of my hoa in the audience. So thank you for coming out and showing your support. So mahalo and I look forward to serving you.
Mahalo, kapohana. We also have with us tonight our chief operating officer, Casey Brown. Casey, would you please introduce the rest of our staff that are present this evening?
Mahalo, Madam Chair. Aloha. Aloha mai. From administration tonight, we have our communications strategist. I saw her there. Oh, there. Kelly Sualo. We also have our beneficiary services agent right up front here, Kayimo Miosteen. We have our systems engineer administrator, our IT support, that's Dan Santos back there. Up front here, we have our multimedia designer, Jason Lees. Oh, we have our community engagement manager, Chantel Belay. And as a resident, she's here sitting with us, but she's also our director of strategy management. And it's Carla Haas that are sitting there with you folks. She's a resident of Wa Manalo. And I'm hoping I'm not missing any, but that's it from administration. Mahalo, Madam Chair.
Mahalo. Thank you, Casey. At this time, I'd like to turn the time over to your island trustee, trustee Kalea Akaka.
Mahalenui, Chair Hulu. And I also want to note again, mahalo for joining us this evening. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience and it's so warming to see you join us this evening. Aloha Auntie and Uncle back there. Nakahwana ohana. All right. Okay, so we'll move on now to our next agenda item, item three, the status of Oha activities. Do we have anyone signed up on this agenda item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Mahalo. I would like to call upon Casey, our kaponui, to give us the status report of our Oha activities.
Mahalo, trustee Akaka. So we like to cover at a general level each region that the trustees are responsible for. So we produce a report. And so we have an Oahu report that covers a lot of issues that's going on. It profiles the region of Oahu. We have a lot of good information in there. The most important thing to know about this report is that we have one. And we put it on our website whenever we're done with a community meeting. And we want you guys to go check it out. We're here to listen to you folks tonight, but we want you to see what we're up to. There's so much good data in that report. And like I said, it covers very current issues that we're trying to advocate on your behalf of. Issues like Red Hill on Oahu, a lot of military leases. And specifically in your area, for example, the landfill, moving of that landfill. We don't want any more extensions. We need to find a new spot for that space. So please, go check out the report, look at all the data, and tell us what we're missing. Yeah? Mahalo, Madam Chair.
Mahalo, Casey. Now, moving on to our next agenda item is our community presentations. And first on our list is Denise Espña from Malama Honua Public Charter School. And before we continue, Lehuwa, do we have any testifiers on this item? Mahalo, Lehuwa. And I also wanted to note that I had the great honor of meeting Denise in Waimea at our last Hawaii island, neighbor island, community meeting, as there were many po'oukumos from various charter schools from across the islands. And we had this meeting coming up and I thought it would be a great opportunity for trustees and staff to come visit the sites that they are at and the work that they do in the fields with the students, even planting kalo and so forth. And it's so wonderful that Denise is able to join us this evening. So now I present you Denise Espña.
Aloha mai kakou. Mahalenui for allowing me to share a little bit about our kula and for visiting with our homana this afternoon. They really enjoyed having you at the learning center over at Sitar. So just a little bit of background information about our kula. So Malama Honua was, as our homana explained to you, opened in Wa Manalo in 2014 with, after the World Wide Voyage had launched with Hokule'a. And really, I think the most important thing to think about is that our mission was really inspired by the values of Hokule'a and the World Wide Voyage. So our mission is to provide an education that cultivates the caring, compassionate, and astute mind of the navigator in students and teachers alike by the appropriate application of indigenous Hawaiian values, inclusive of 21st century skills. So as we think about, as you... Let me try again. As we take a look at what Malama Honua is about, you can see that we're a values-based organization, right? Hawaiian culture and values are at the core and the foundation of what we do and why we do it. We really want to make sure that our homana are celebrating where they are from, who they are, and being able to use that as that foundation as they look and explore what is going on in our community and what is it that we can do to make a positive change, make a positive difference. So that is our vision of the graduate. And in order to do that, we understand that we cannot be just confined to the four walls of our school. And so just to share, really, the only way that we can be as successful as we have been with our homana is because we are in an amazing community and that we know and we recognize that we need to partner with our other Native Hawaiian charter schools. We need to definitely partner in our... Wa Manalo really is the most amazing place. As you look around the realm, you see that we have only been this successful. We are celebrating our 10th year in Wa Manalo because of the amazing community partners that we have. And so you kind of see what's going on. And it's throughout Ko'olapoko that our homana are able to really experience, not only to get out and be a part of and learn with and from Aina, but that they really build that pilina with our place as well as the amazing partners that we have. And so today, you were able to see our work with Auntie Ilima and Uncle Ted. And so how the beauty of the university and our community coming together to support our keke. And that's why our students are able to share with you about the agroforests, about the kalo that they're growing, about the la'au garden that they're starting. You see that we partner with Kaniho'umoku, Voyaging Academy. We are doing junior lifeguarding right in our own beaches. Our kumu, Kumusharlanikalama, is up with our homana upmauka. Both learning the importance of gathering and how to be respectfully gather. And so even at the baby level, right? It's about supporting our first and second graders as well as their makua in understanding the values that are so important that allow us to then realize that if they're going to advocate for us and become our next leaders, they need to be immersed and have those opportunities presented to them. That is an image of them at Ho'ouka Aina. And then in the bottom left corner, their work. We partnered with Kamakau and the Native Alaskan University up at Alaska in seeing how not only are we working hard in Hawaii, but also that there are other indigenous cultures that are also working very hard and how can we learn with and from them as well. And really, again, the only way we are able to engage in all of these different learning opportunities is because of the foundation that they have here in Wa Manalo. So how do we show that we are ready to go? That we are ready to be alakai and navigators for our future? So in addition to making sure that we are engaging in Aina, we also make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable to rigor and high expectations. So our homana are, in addition to the Western assessments that they're held accountable for, reading, writing, math, science, social studies, we also have portfolio defenses at fourth and, I mean, fifth and eighth grade. They have a voyage that they take for four days and three nights across Kanihohe Bay on Kaniho'umoku. Every single, at the end of each trimester, they have to present to their family, our community, saying how are they taking on this kulianna from babies all the way up to eighth grade. We make sure that they are accountable to their own learning as well as sharing that out with their makua at student-led conferences. And so all of these pieces are so very, very important. And so how do we set that up is through this, every trimester, looking at, how are we looking back? Ovaila, who am I? Where do I come from? Making sure that they understand the importance of ma'ouku au'auhau from when they're babies in kindergarten all the way up to their understanding of their part in the ma'ouku au'auhau, of the Aina, of their kumuhula, of ohana va'a. And then moving into what are the amazing things that our community leaders are doing now and what can we learn from them? Partnering with people like Auntie Ilima, Kimiona Kane. I mean, these are real-life, real-day people who are making a difference every single day in their community. What can they learn so that they can then implement and come up with ideas for the future? Because we know that our keke are brilliant and will be able to carry us into the future with their amazing ideas, building off of the solid foundation that they have. So our whole curriculum really is looking at ku'auhau, ku'upu ho'ike, that we have a solid foundation in what we're doing, that we are really learning and exploring and understanding the importance of science and culture and that interplay. And then that always we're celebrating, what are our next steps? What are we going to be doing to ho'ike that information? And so again, ku'auhau, what are our artifacts that we're using? Our cultural artifacts that help us to understand and present our learning in a variety of different ways, whether it's from traditional ceremony to caring for our kalo. Then moving into how does science play the role in that? That our ike kupuna, I mean, there's brilliance there. And so how do we begin to help them to navigate both Western science world as well as what they've learned as foundational to who they are and their cultural foundations? And then always, how do we ho'ike, right? How do we share their knowledge even from when they're little? That's the fifth and eighth grade defense. If you're familiar with what students have to do in college, where they have to stand in front of a panel like this, our homana at fifth and eighth grade also have to do the same thing. Sharing, this is the work that we've been doing in our community and then having that panel ask them some really hard questions. Because we want them, when they get older, or even today, where they were able to share with all of you, to be able to stand up and say, this is what we believe in, this is why it's important, and advocate for our la'ui. So fifth and eighth grade defense, and I won't go into all of the details, but that's in your packet. And then I also shared in that packet an excerpt from one of our homana. So you can take some time to read through his own words about his work at the Fish Pond and why it was so valuable and how Aina-based learning is truly more important to him. He is getting, by the way, straight A's at Kailua High School right now. However, he understands that all of that other information, that stuff, he said, wasn't as powerful and impactful to him as the work that he did at the Fish Pond. That he understood his kulianna not from all of the math and science and social studies and English that we had him do, but because of the work that he was doing with Aina. So that leads us then to the work that we're doing. As you know from your, that meeting up in Waimea, Native Hawaiian charter schools and charter schools are not funded equitably. But yet, we do this work from a sense of kulianna. And so, do we have a facility? No. Do we get facility funding? A'ole. However, what's most important are our babies. And so we, just like we ask our homana to get out there and partner, just like as our kula, we get out and partner with our communities. We know and it's essential to our success to partner with as many different organizations as possible. And to make sure that we're showing, we're modeling as an organization that we, not only they have to do research and learning and community building, but so do we as an organization. So one of the things that we're doing is critical action research, working with other charter schools, working with both research organizations in Hawaii as well as on the continent to say, the work that we do around Aina-based education, the work that we do that is showing you outcomes, not just circling a Scantron sheet, is really the most powerful and the most important thing that we can be doing. And that we continue to require and appreciate the support that we get from definitely our community partners as well as from Oha. And then also, oops, you were able to see, oh, that was not it. Let me go back. There we go. So our big vision is right now, we have classroom space. Thank you to Wa Manalo Hawaiian Homes, right back there. We also have classroom space at St. Matthew's Church. K through two is in one location. And then three through six, mahalo to Huimalama Okekai. They're able to have us there. But as you can imagine, three through eight, I mean, a K through eight, being in three different locations, even though we're in Wa Manalo, I mean, it's challenging. It's difficult to have a school that we can't always be together. And so we are working towards a singular campus. And you could see when you came to visit at Huimalama, all of that area needs to be cleared. And this is our vision for the future, to really give our homana in Wa Manalo and our community what we deserve, which is a place to learn that's safe and clean and really matches the rigor that we're expecting from them to make sure that we're providing for them. So although we don't get funded the same way that the DOE schools are, we still have that expectation plus our own expectations of them learning with and from Aina, being able to stand up and present their ideas, advocate for what they believe in. They deserve a location that is going to help them to continue to grow. So mahalo, this is a mahalo definitely for all that you do to ko'ouka us as well as a request to continue to support us and the work that we're doing. So mahalenui.
Trustee Ahuna.
I just wanted to say thank you to Malama Honua Charter School. And the reason why I'm saying thank you is, what? As an educator, how they're moving is way ahead of the DOE. And I'm going to say this because if anybody caught on what she was saying, she talked about performance-based assessments, okay? That's different than content standards. That's old. That is old and out of the way. So what they're accomplishing is an essential question at every grade level. And they're able to articulate, not just write, but articulate these essential questions. So I want to congratulate you guys for doing that. You guys are ahead of the game, so I understand right on. Very much in support of what you guys do, so thank you very much.
I also want to announce that we believe so much in the charter school program that each year, Oha gives $3 million to the Hawaiian charter schools. And we're so pleased. And we like to hear these reports because we know that the money is being put to good use. So mahalo for all the good work of Malama Honua today. We saw a very positive outlook.
I believe we also gave another $3 million for facility money as well. I just wanted to add that, I believe we gave another $3 million for facility money for our charter schools too, so I just wanted to add that too. Thank you.
And I also wanted to acknowledge in the house as well as Huimalama, mahalo for providing the space and opportunity for our charter school here too. And now moving on to our next presenter is the CEO and founder of Truth Is Now, Ashley Maha'a. Lehuwa, do we have anyone to testify on this item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, mahalo. Ashley, if you want to come join us here. And as Ashley is ready to present to us, I just wanted to share a little background information on how this is so important for our community and initiative that we put priority on here at the Office Point Affairs. In January, I had attended, as well as our trustee Galutaria and trustee Kyoni Souza, a roundtable discussion hosted by US Senator Mazie Hirono at Oha with organizations that support Native Hawaiian women and Native Hawaiian survivors of gender-based violence. And presented were the challenges these organizations face and the need to better combat this epidemic and ways we can support our Native Hawaiian survivors. And Ashley Maha'a was there. And Oha is working to safeguard our Native Hawaiian women, children, and families through both state and federally initiatives. And I just wanted to share with you some important statistics for you all to know. So according to the 2022 Missing and Murdered Native Hawaiian Women and Girls Task Force Report, more than one quarter of missing girls in Hawaii are Native Hawaiian. The average profile of a missing child is 15-year-old female, Native Hawaiian, and from Oahu. Forty-three percent, again, forty-three percent of sex trafficking cases are Kanakamali girls trafficked here in Waikiki, Oahu. On Hawaii Island, Kanakamali children ages 15 through 17 represent the highest number of missing children's cases, with the most children reported missing in Hilo, area code 96720. From 2018 to 2021, there were 182 cases of missing Kanakamali girls on Hawaii Island, higher than any other racial group. Fifty-seven percent of participants served through the Mana Olana Program at Child and Family Services are Native Hawaiian females who have experienced human trafficking. Again, I would like to introduce to you Ashley Maha'a, who is the CEO and founder of Truth Is Now. And I have so much aloha for Ashley. She has lived experience with human trafficking and she is here to share with us of the organization she started. Mahalenui, Ashley.
Hi, everyone. I feel so awkward with my back to everyone, so I apologize. Can I? Can I? I get so nervous, and I just do better if I feel like I'm just having one conversation with you all. My name is Ashley Mahaa. Born and raised, I was actually, my mom raised me out here in Waumanalo when she was younger. She was a teenage mom back in the 80s when I was born. And she was brought up kind of with me in like a nunnery for unwed teenage mothers. And Waumanalo really called us home. And so I feel really called to come and share just everything that I don't want to affect this community. I never thought I would be a human trafficking victim at all. I felt like I had a strong community. I had strong ties to my family. We were always doing things together. But we also really struggled. Poverty and substance use, incarceration, and other things kind of plagued our families, and it caused these cracks. And the cracks caused cracks within me. And traffickers, they look for those cracks in our community, and they exploit them. And I just don't want that to happen. I work on the Missing and Murdered Native Hawaiian Women and Girls Report. I also work nationally on this issue. And I work with an organization called Polaris Project. They run the National Human Trafficking Hotline. And they started collecting data from 2015. And I can tell you that 365 people were identified as human trafficking victims in our island for a hotline that we don't even advertise. I mean, the national human trafficking is not something that you see here. And yet, 365 people were identified as victims, and they found that hotline. And so you can imagine that, not knowing about the issue, it's just so vast. That was insane to me. When we were doing the report, that's insane to me. And it's just, it's not right, and it's not okay. I also work on a lot of issues of after-exit. I worked on a report where we surveyed those who have overcome trafficking, such as myself. And the majority of us, like three-quarters of us, will not survive or have any life after this. Our income after trafficking was less than $50,000 a year for our whole household. So we leave trafficking, and we never get ahead. Trafficking steals a part of your life for so long. And it's really hard to integrate back. And so for me, what's really important is preventing it from the start. Some of the vulnerabilities of trafficking, like I've said, are poverty, our mental illness, separation in families, no community support, sexual abuse, sexual assault, mental illness, substance use. I mean, everything that we know is plaguing our island. And those are the vulnerabilities that traffickers exploit. And human trafficking has been found in 25 different industries. That's everything from hotels to commercial, you know, sexual exploitation, things such as strip clubs. It's been found in house cleaning, landscape. It's been found in construction. There is no industry where human trafficking has not been identified. And so it's just a larger issue. And I feel like when we think about trafficking, we always think about the 15-year-old girl. But really, it's affecting everyone, boys, girls, everyone, all people of all different ages. I mean, there is no one that an exploiter will not try to take advantage of. And so a few things I wanted to talk about was, I do work with the organization Mana Olana. And so they do case management for adults, females generally in this area. And that is a resource that is not here. Most of the human trafficking orgs service all of Oahu, but they're based out in Honolulu. And so I feel like we really need more case management here and more awareness. And really, we are starting the second half of the Missing and Murdered Native Hawaiian Women and Girls Report. And we are calling out everyone who is Native Hawaiian and has experienced any type of domestic violence or human trafficking or sexual assault or abuse or anyone who has even gone missing and come back to your family or those of you who have missing members. If you are in the right space and you feel called to have your voice heard in the second report, it, you know, is as anonymous as possible. We are doing it in such a different way. Really just a call to talk story and really share what is going on so we can understand the scope of the issue from our lens, instead of from, like, the first half of the report was very academic, very much a researcher lens. And we're like, we need to tell the stories in a way that we all feel, you know, needs to be told. And there'll be food, because that was not in the first part of the report. There was no food to be found. But I just wanted to let everyone know because we are missing a lot of the voices from this whole side. And the reason that Oahu dominates is because we have all the orgs here, and that's who they're serving. So the only voices that are being heard are those who we can report on. And I can tell you that if we did service the whole island and everything, it wouldn't just be a 15-year-old female from Oahu. We would find the true scope of, you know, this issue from all the islands. Yeah.
Mahalenui, Ashley. Members, any questions or comments? Okay, singnan. Before we move on to our next presenter, I wanted to share with you all that if you are interested in testifying under Community Concerns and Celebrations, then please do so in signing up there with Keemu at the table there so that you may be able to do so after our next presenter. And now, moving on to our next presenter, we have Kalani Franda, who we know also well, used to be at OHA. He's now with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Lehua, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this agenda item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Mahalo, Lehua. Welcome, Kalani.
Aloha. Aloha Chair Lindsay, Madam Chair, the Board of Trustees Kapohana, OHA Leadership, OHA Ohana, Kupuna, and the Waumanalo community. I'm here on behalf of Hawaiian Homelands and glad to share with you guys an update. Some of you have heard a couple of our updates. We had one beginning of this year at our Commission Community Meeting. And then we also had another one during summer at the Neighborhood Board Meeting. So glad to be here in front of the Waumanalo community. So the, um, is there a? Okay. I'm going to shift, if that's okay, and sit on that side. So that way I can not have my back to you guys. Oops, and maybe not. Can I pull it? Thanks. Sorry. Thank you so much. Okay, got it. So back in, the slide that you guys have, the trustees and Kapohana, is a more updated slide. So back in about 2018, we had some lands that were conveyed over to us here in Waumanalo from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, about 105 acres. And so we needed some time to go through and take a look at what this land entails. So we've had a number of different things that we needed to do. Still going through the process of the environmental assessment and putting some designs and engineering together. The next... So we took a look at three different concepts. One of them was looking at, oops. One of them was looking at it specifically for residential lots. And what we identified was, we could, so an updated number is about 250 lots that we could possibly provide. And when you take a look at our waiting list, we have roughly about 11,000 on the island-wide waiting list for the island of Oahu. The next scenario that we have is agriculture. And so agriculture, we can plot out roughly about 57 lots. And that's a minimum of about half an acre. And we have roughly 4,000-plus on the waiting list for agriculture on the island of Oahu. And then we also took a look at a third concept, and that was to look at a mixture of both, a mixture of residential and a mixture of subsistence agriculture. And we did a recent award in Panaeva, about half-acre lots. And the reason for that was, a lot of our lots used to be like five-acre or some of it, much larger. And then the lessee would come back, try to subdivide it. And some of you guys know the pain that you go through to county, subdivide all of this stuff. So what we're trying to do is provide smaller lots so we can address more of the waiting lists and be able to get our lahui on the land. One of the things that we've been working on as well is, some of the things that have been very difficult for the awardees to navigate is you get a vacant lot, especially when it's residential. It's hard for you to go through and actually be the owner-builder because it's like, now you gotta figure out, okay, where do I get the plans from? How do I go about the? You become the developer itself. And then you gotta go look for the financing. Then you gotta come up with the 20% down. It's really rough. So the department is working hard to provide resources so we can provide turnkey opportunities. So depending on what you qualify for, you can actually come, identify one of the models, and then be able to build on that with the opportunity to expand eventually when you have more funds. And we've also been working with the federal government and to be able to look and find many different loan products that our Native Hawaiian people can actually qualify for. Some exciting ones are 0% Down with Nahazda. And then we have some other programs, 184A, et cetera, et cetera, that provides really good lending products, so you're not paying this enormous amount. The next item is, you guys know this already. We've done a number of different things here. And this one was on Nekini and Huli Streets, on doing traffic calming. We had about six areas that we identified and completed back. It should have been completed by summer, this past summer. We also did some stream and drainage channel improvements. And the next set of slides will show the pictures of the before and after. And I have an update for you guys on this one. And so you guys probably have seen a lot of work being done on the channel in the back. The good thing is, we kind of finished it. The not-so-good thing is it shifted. So because it shifted, we're not done yet. We actually gotta make sure it's paw. And so we're going back again, getting more funding. It's gonna take a lot of money. And so we're going back for more funding so we can re-line the entire channel to make sure that it's safe and it does what it's supposed to do, and that's flood control. And this particular one will show the entire... Is this the red? No, okay. So the whole yellow is where the channel is. Next slide talks about the sewer system improvements. So as you guys know, there's a whole cesspool assessment that federal government had imposed to make sure that can bring everybody up to par as far as water quality, et cetera. And so one of the things that we've been doing is assessing. And the latest that where we're at right now is going through the design process. So we're having some of our consultants go out, work on the assessment of what's required, what's out there, gathering data, and then starting to put now pen to paper and putting some of that to design so we can be able to address and go back and request the proper funding to go through and actually do the improvements themselves. And... That is our update for this region. Mahalo. I was cesspool.
Mahalo, Kalani. Members, are there any questions or comments? Okay, singnan. Mahalo, Kalani. We will now move on to our Community Concerns and Celebrations. I see that we have some signed up here. And I'll start off with our first one. Leona Kalima.
And if you're claiming, please give me your number, okay? Because I've been taking crap, let me tell you. The check should have been in the mail already. Okay, first of all.
Casey, what landfill are we talking about? We have a convenience center, but the Waumanalo landfill is above Kapolei.
It's in Na'au.
Yeah. So we have a convenience center, but we don't have a landfill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, check our report on what, I'll check.
Yeah, please, because that subject has come up before.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, DJ Chow. We heard there's gonna be 56 lots and ag lots back here in the Walhalla farm. Traffic control. Number one, traffic control. Yeah, because we already get problems over here. So we would like to talk to you about that. You notice some roads on Olo Olo just stopped right there. So let's get it in there, okay? Don't depend on this road, because we get kids on this road. Okay.
Oh, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, now I can, okay. Okay. Hakuanee. Did you know that OHA had the privilege of getting Kalailoa? But that was killed before the offer of Ka'aka. Yeah. We gotta talk history. Okay. I don't know if your due diligence people went and questioned STEM. I did. I went to the university, talked to Professor of STEM. Ha'ha'ani is, in the history, a fish pond, salt ponds, yeah, and a landfill. When I talked to the guy, the professor up there, he warned me about tsunamis. And if you notice, the tsunami sign is on Alamoana Boulevard now. And if you notice, the state is getting rid of a lot of coastal land because of tsunami zones and coastal erosions. So I think last year you guys got offered something by Psyche. Think you guys better look at that, okay? Because...
It wasn't a good offer.
Yeah, but you know what I mean, like, play with them already. Because Poha can tell you, the legislature would promise money, and they never come true. She was the senator at the time. So they really gave us the raw, the raw stuff, okay? But what the STEM guy told me is that eventually that ground will seep. So your foundation will move. Okay? On top of that, yeah, it's in a tsunami zone. So when Malia Ka'iui, okay, there was Leona OHA and then Leona community. And Leona OHA took a lot of hits, okay? So I had to come to the community and put my concern here. When I asked Malia, "Malia, when the tsunami comes, yeah, where going?" She's like, "Going to have conduits." And the wave go to the conduit and come up on Alamoana Boulevard. I'm like, "You tell me what trustee, when the wave coming, go say, 'Please, go to the conduit' and hit Alamoana Boulevard." Ah ole. You gotta look at what the facts are today. You gotta look at what the facts are today in climate change. And I love STEM, so I like the science and the math part of it. So you really gotta mucka all of that. And then they screwed you for the longest time. Now I bet you guys worried about the scenery across the street. Worried about you guys scenery, gonna block them, right? Okay. Kalima lawsuit. Oh, I wish the check was in the mail gang. I'm really sorry that hasn't come yet. They can hear me.
Okay. But we need your name and number, and we need to advocate stronger.
Auntie, it's for those also on livestream, so they can hear you.
Okay, but we need you to advocate, yeah? To, from what I heard, yeah, not only our lawyers, because we're supposed to get our check in the mail, September. Then we had the appeal. And now, where's the check? If it was supposed to be September? It's held up somewhere. Okay? And I venture to say that money is being held up by the state. Yeah, and all that stuff that goes with this lawsuit. And I want you to know, I have taken hits left and right for this lawsuit. Thank God. Thank God, I'm a strong person. Because I've taken it from claimants who's like, I haven't seen him in 24 years. When come now, they're like, where's the check? I should be the first one in line. And I want you, there's so much interest that seeds into this lawsuit. But let me tell you, I would go for Kalima too. Because some things have not straightened out DHHL. And I call it the genocide death list. But there's some other things we're trying to work on, we're trying to work on land. And whatever money is left from the lawsuit, Ma Manao has always been, and it's in the act, lender of last resort. DHHL is the lender of last resort. So when you there and you cannot afford it, DHHL takes you in. So you know, we're back on the damn list. So whatever money's left from the lawsuit is going back to DHHL for lender of last resort. These are the things I'm working on, I can use you guys' support. If anything to talk to because of the hits I take. Pray for me. Just pray for me, because I want my check in the mail. We all want our check in the mail. We've got stuff we gotta do. Yeah? We gotta get the stuff we really, we really do. We can't be on the list anymore. Cannot be dying on the list anymore. So please, help me, and let's imoa moa. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Auntie. Um, moving on to the next.
How are you?
Yes, Casey.
Auntie Leona, I just wanted to make sure that Wa Manalo is good with the issues. Regarding the landfill, the latest info is, the Nanakuli site, border water said, too close to aquifer. So not, not, not so good, so they're trying to find another site. Yeah, exactly, exactly. And they're trying to extend the permit, so we're advocating, we're advocating. Mahalo.
Thank you, Casey. Moving on to our next community concern celebration, Kanua Switzer.
Switzer, but hey.
Thank you.
Switzer, Switzer. So why am I here? I'm from Koala, Koala Loa, and I'm over here in Koala Poco. And it is one of my favorite places, anyway. So, you know, not Leu Theater, this is how I, I'm here. Shell called me up and said, oh, Oha's gonna be in Wa Manalo. And we need to, we need to go over there and thank them for all the support that they've given us, putting on the Gabi Pa Inui Festival every year. And I went, oh, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. I'm gonna be in Seattle and, you know, getting ready to take the musicians up to Seattle. So you going? She wasn't asking you. Okay, so here I am, you gotta thank Oha, so thank you for all the support that you've given us. And that wasn't the two announcements that I was gonna make. And the two announcements ended up being three announcements after your presentation. So one of the things is, we have, I'm with the University of Hawaii, and we have a grant called HPY Positive Engagement Program. And what we do is, we teach the teachers, DOE teachers, and parents, skill sets that they can use in a classroom and at home. And the first, the, the basic obstacle that most teachers have is, I don't have time. I don't have time. And I've been a teacher for 25, 30, 40 years, there's nothing else that they can teach me. However, once they come to the, the class or the, the training, they have a very different perspective. An example would be the principal for Makiki Christian Church Preschool, or something like that, on Pensacola. One of her teachers came, and she liked the program, but she didn't have enough time. And what can you teach me? I've been a teacher, principal, so then she said, but I want my teachers to go. So she got three teachers, and says, okay, we'll all go. So she's number four, right? We'll all go. And she was, she was telling me just this Saturday, this past Saturday, she said. And my idea was, after a week, I'll just drop off, because I don't have enough time. Everybody is gonna believe me, I'm the principal. And then he says, after the first week, I learned so much that there's no way that I could leave. And she went all the way through, and, and so that's the, that's the thing. And, and one of the things that I teach, I'm a Hooponopono practitioner. So one of the things that I teach is bringing it from, from our Hooponopono practices, is teaching the teachers how to teach the kids how to overcome test anxiety. But it's not really how to overcome test anxiety, because when I went to the preschool, I asked them, hey, you guys give the students tests? They go, no. I go, oh, so we're not gonna do test anxiety? We're just gonna, do you, you have anxiety? Oh, yeah. That you're student, the ones you take care of have anxiety? Yeah, we're just gonna do anxiety. So it's really not about how to overcome test anxiety, it's how to overcome anxiety. And you can put it in anywhere you want. And by the way, the athletes know how to use the process of being in focus. We refer to it as hakalau, and I didn't come up with it, Uncle Joe's, I hope he did, so don't ask me for the kona. And the other one is, I have an online Hooponopono program that's free. If you was to do it, start the timer right now and complete it, it'd take like four or five hours to complete it. And willing to give it to anybody to show you how, and it's the basics, you know? But it'll actually show you how you have an emotion, how it affects you, give you the foundation, and then even help you clear it, and you can test to see if you've moved through the thing or not. And let me ask you, just everybody, and you don't have, this is a rhetorical question. How does a person know, how do you know that you have a problem? I can feel it. How does it feel? Uh, not good. So then the other question is, how do you know that you resolved it and you moved through it? You can feel that too. How does that feel? Neutral. That's how you know you've resolved the problem. And one of the things, our whole form of Hooponopono is based on Auntie Morna Semino's work. And her premise was, release the trauma around the memories. So in regards to what you were saying, of course, you gotta test that out and see if it works with the people that you work with, right? We can assist, see if we can assist the people that, that are having that trauma. See if we can assist them in releasing the trauma from those experiences. That's it.
Mahalo, Uncle. Mahalo. Our third community concern celebration is Ku Ike.
Aloha e kako.
Aloha.
Mahalo e kaluna noho, ah, no kia, manava e kuka kuka me oko pakaiapa. So mahalo Chair, again, and first thing I'd like to celebrate is kapoahana. Congratulations, ho maika inuya oye, Stacy. Yeah, and mahalo for all of your years of kakoa and support to the agricultural industry, for Kanaka, for Kanaka education, and the community of Wa Manalo. Much of your work as an unsung hero goes unseen, but I'm here to testify for that, so mahalo nu ya oye kapoahana. Kalamai, you know, I, I wasn't aware, you know, that at each agenda item, you guys are just gonna take testimony. And, and really, really, I'm not ma'a to giving testimony before the presentation's even done.
Yeah, that's when you sunshine latine.
Wow. You know, I'd like to see it at the language, so, you know. I'll email you later.
Well, believe me, we, it's something that, yeah.
Okay.
We gotta follow it, we don't like it, but we gotta follow it.
Well, moving on, and if, Chair, if you would entertain it, I just have a few comments that I'd like to make to our DHHL representative. Yeah, so mahalo Kalani, you know, for presenting on behalf of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. You know, I just wanna say, the traffic calming mitigation on the Huli Street, right in front of Blanche Pope, is quite offensive. Yeah. For the first two years that this budget item was coming up, you know, our senators and representatives are raving, yeah, we got $850,000 for you Kanaka. You know, unfortunately, if you take a drive up Nakini, you go around, come down Huli, the traffic calming mitigation or the speed tables are almost non-existent. It's almost like you guys contractors just painted the road and said, oh, we out of money, too bad, so sad. So I take offense to that. And I think publicly it needs to be put on the record, you know, that Kanaka money, Kanaka projects should be managed better. I believe it can be done. I believe we have great examples of that being done. I just think, somewhere down the line, someone in DHHL fumbled the ball. So mahalo for the opportunity to speak to that. All right, in addition to that, I just want to share with you folks, you know, it's just my personal manao, my personal manao, that the expansion of homes in Wa Manalo will equate to additional load on the current infrastructure. Everybody's guru gotta go someplace. Currently, we have up to 12 injection wells in Wa Manalo at the sewage plant that skim the raw sewage and then pump it right down into our aquifer. Yeah. So at the end of the line, all of our kio that's being managed by the city and county ends up at our shorelines over here. So part of this big federal mitigation plan to convert, you know, what is already in existence from 50, 40, 60 years ago. You know, the individual home, how they manage their space, and septic tanks, you know? I think we need to take a better look at that. So I guess the call to action is, if I can ask of the trustees and Chair, if you guys would support, you know, a research plan to go try and figure out, yeah, how much of the city and counties sewage plants are on crown lands? Yeah? How much of the city and county sewage plants operate their business on crown lands? And of the 20% equity, where is that held for Kanaka? Because new additional costs, yeah, to Ohano who are already struggling and surviving, yeah, may mean the difference between the keki eating and the keki filling up the toilet. We live in a society where we live amongst crises, everything, housing, food, water, air, everything, jobs, education. My question is, where's the equity for Kanaka? So I implore you, Chair, trustees, yeah, to support some sort of measurement, some sort of research project to go find out. Because if you're not paying attention, currently for the past year and a half, two years, the city and county have been revamping their TMK. So what we're seeing, what we're seeing is historically documented crown lands, especially in Wa Manalo, are being erased right in front of us digitally. Now what happens 20 years, 40 years, 50 years from now, when nobody questioned the fact? We lose out as Kanaka. So mahalo for entertaining that. The last thing that I wanna bring up that I have real concern is our ivi kupuna. According to NAGPRA, yeah, Oha is the only native Hawaiian organization identified to malama our international repatriations. So I ask you, Chair, trustees, and kapoahana, to please, 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 pay some, put some special attention, yeah, on bringing our kupuna home. It is very critical to our future and is very critical to our identity, that we re-establish and re-kanu the very foundation of why we call ourselves Kanaka today. Now with that, I wanna finish up with this. Where's the plan? Where's the effort, where's the attention? Yeah, to setting aside resources, setting aside aina, to kanu those you see today. You look around the room, 100% of us going, make. Where do we kanu ourselves? What's the affordability plan? What's, what's plan A for our Kanaka today? Cremation. What happens 100 years from now when our mo'opuna go look for our ivi, and it's not there? No one, nothing for stand on. Maybe a solution to that, if you guys would consider, yeah, supporting a project to maybe partner up with DOE, maybe DLNR, on conservation lands, to do a legacy tree project, a legacy forest project. We have methods today that have been mandated, and been, it's law now, that water cremation. Hemo the flesh, hemo the iyo, we left with the ivi. Why not? Yeah, why not? Figure out spaces, figure out places where we can kanu our kupuna, kanu our makua today, kanu our keki today, to re-establish that ku au how, that mo'oku au how that was spoken on earlier. So our mo'opuna get peely to aina. We gotta re-establish that connection. We talk about aloha aina, that's inclusive of aloha kupuna and aloha kako. So mahalo again, Chair, trustees, for the opportunity to speak. I'm open now and willing to take any questions.
Actually, I'd like to add some things that I hope that will relieve your mind. In the last legislature, Aloha Funeral Home presented the water cremation, which is the old way that our kupuna buried our people. And they went through two sessions of legislature, but this past year, it was passed. And there is water cremation in Hawaii. So that is one way to preserve the bones, our, our ivi kupuna, you know? So that is a possibility now, and we're really happy to be able to offer that to, you know, people, to let them know that that is another way to bury a kupuna. And that's Aloha Marchuary. I believe they're in Honolulu. Are you aware of them?
Yes, Anake, um, you know, hi. I really don't enjoy this, but I dogwatch bills as well. So I'm very much aware of that bill, and all of the effort that it took to push that through.
Yes.
So I am aware, yes, mahalo. And that's how we've been able to malama some of our ohana that recently passed, especially from Molokai.
Yes.
You know, because we Awamoon, we carry that kuliana here for Wa Manalo and Wa Manalo. In addition to that, I, I also wanted to extend that manao. Yeah, that as the world figures out how to mitigate, you know, climate change and sea level rises, and as we understand through history, yeah, and historical context and our scholars, that much of our ivi kupuna were kanu, were buried in pu'uone.
Right.
Yeah, along our coastlines.
Right.
So how do we mitigate? Where's the plan for that? Yeah? Where's the relocation plan before, you know, our kupuna are unearthed and exposed to the sun? Maikola ina ivi kupuna i kala. I take that to heart.
There is quite a few ivi that's being uncovered on ocean side, especially on Maui, where I come from. And we mitigate as it occurs, because we, sometimes we don't know where they are until they fall in the ocean, you know? But I want to reassure you that ivi kupuna is a high priority for Oha. And I think we have some of the best Hawaiians in our department working in that area. And that's Kai Markel and Kamakana Farera. So we, we have the highest respect for them, and we always listen to their recommendations, because we know they've been around a long time, and we malama our ivi kupuna. We're concerned about it. So trust us, trustees, that we are, that is one of our highest priorities.
Mahalo Chair, and if you would, would entertain one last comment for me. As one of mahalo for you folks again, mahalo to the administration, all the support staff. How we malama our kupuna today is how our mo'opuna will malamas tomorrow. My point, Anake la.
Mahalo Kuike. And I also wanted to add to, you had mentioned our crown lands and the 20% that is due to our people through the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. In our due diligence, we found that we've been getting about three to four, maybe five. In our due diligence, we found that we've been getting about 3% to 4%, maybe 5% of that 20% that we should be getting. And we appreciate testimony from our community to support us in those efforts, because we need the state to know that this is due to our people, so we can provide even more funding into our communities and see how we can best collaborate through that funding. And that was something that was part of that, what the speaker psyche had offered in trying to work with us regarding our haku'one property, it was not a good deal for us. It was not a good deal for our people. So I just, I just want you folks to know that too. So testimony is greatly appreciated because we are not getting 20% and we have found that a lot of what has been, has been happening is on an honor system. So people are putting their interpretation of what should be paid to the state. And then the state then interprets what they would like to pay to our people.
Leave it up to lawyers to mess it up.
Mahalo Ku'ike. Yes, and I want, thank you. And I want you all to know that that also remains a top priority to us regarding what the state refers to as a public land trust, which is our native Hawaiian former crown and government lands. And I see here that we have, in our community concerns and celebrations, kimo kaho'ano.
Well, first of all, I wanna thank each and every one of you who are part of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for sharing your lives, for sharing that time that you committed to Hawaii, to these wonderful people, to the heart and the soul. Without you, a'ole, we are stomped into the ground. We are nothing without you. We cannot be who we are. There was a chant, a very simple chant that was shared with me from the days of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs many, many years ago, before your time. If I may just share that with you and with all of these wonderful people, everyone who gives their heart, their soul, their spirit, their heritage, their culture, just as I with mine and my history. I honor this time that we are together, not in a negative way, but in the hope of the future, in the love of each other, in the care of all that is Hawaiian, and in the kingdom that everyone was cared for. Heo'eno'ivi'olino'e ana'pula'pula'ha'lo'a'e ama'e Hawaii'a ni'i'au'e'apunike'a'uma'lamalama'e Aloha'e nakupuna kahiko'e'ana'a'e ho'ulumainee'e'ya kakou'e ho'lo'ponoe'a alo'a'a e kalelana Ehanakakomeke'afonue'e'pili me'kaha'ke aloha'e'ao'e'a ikulia'ikanu'u'e'ka'uika'iu oluna'e
Mahalo nui, Anakala. Mahalo. And with that, I will now move it on to our announcements portion. Members, are there any announcements at this time? No? Okay, I will share that tomorrow, starting at 10:00 AM, November 8th, Wednesday, we have our beneficiary advocacy and apartment committee meeting at 10:00 AM. And then following that, we have our resource management community meeting at 1:30 PM. Also coming up is the second, 22nd Annual Native Hawaiian Convention on November 14th through 17th, 2023, at the Maui Arts and Cultural Center in Kahului, Maui. And I'm proud to say that Oha is one of the sponsors for this event. And I also wanted to say a mahalo nui to Wa Manalo Hawaiian Homestead Association for making it possible for us to have our meeting at this halau, this evening. So mahalo nui. And being that I see no other further announcements.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
We have pu'u'omolokai over there. Yeah? Oh, hello.
We have pu'u'omolokai over there. And that's part of that 56 places they wanna make. That place is in an archaeology book and Auntie Nikki Heinz gives the history for it. I live at the corner house up there. We still get night walkers. We get night walkers coming past there. And let me tell you, we know the path. It went through Lina'ala Heine's house and went all the way up to Trustee Machado's house. And that's only one, that's only one path. We have several paths coming here and we still have them. So let's respect our culture in more ways than one. Okay, so make sure they don't touch that pool when DHL comes in, please. And yes, I wanna thank these guys because, man, that's my Oha, 26 years with Oha, 26 years with Oha. So I'm so happy to see you all. I really am. By the way, I need job again. Nah, 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 I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. But I would like to talk to you. And I do wanna talk to you, okay? Because Kalima case was supposed to do something. And it was from this woman that met with me that are probate in our beneficiaries of the lawsuit, actually got screwed, okay? And when I tried to get a lawyer on board who was gonna do a flat fee of $750 to take care of probate, I got killed by my lawyer. I mean, absolutely roasted. So we trying, we trying for land. We trying for land, so the people who getting money can buy house. How often do you get a settlement in your pocket? Some of you over $100,000. We need house for that. So I need your help. We need to move on and get ourselves out of whatever predicament we're in, because we have the strength and the numbers to do it. Love you guys. Aloha.
Mahalo Auntie. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just real quick, I thought that when you called my name, I was doing an announcement, so that's why it seemed like, you know, when you, when you called my name, I went, "Oh, must be on announcements now." So all of mine were announcements.
Mahalo.
Good job, good job.
It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments, members? Saying none, Lehuwa, can we please have a roll call vote to adjourn?
Trustee Ahuna? Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina is excused. Trustee Alapa?
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria is excused. Trustee Souza? Trustee Trask is excused. Trustee Waihe'e? Chair Hulu Lindsay? We have six, yes, we are adjourned.
Mahalo Lehuwa. The meeting is now adjourned. Mahalo, members, all in attendance, all live streaming. Ahuiho kakou. Malama'pono aloha'ano.